We do this one, number two, in the CHS and STAR.
Excuse me, all messages to the agenda and are there any changes? I don't know if you'll entertain it. We have an item for information. Number two item of information, a discussion of the STARS Act that pertains to future pay. And since we're moving our collective bargaining room, or at least we're voting on our collective bargaining room tonight, and that is future pay, I thought it makes sense to move that number two item for information up above on items of action. If there's no concern, I'm not going to go in that direction.
Okay. This is the time for general public comment over meeting. Public, so this is the time for comment on public matters that are not on the agenda. Public matters do not include any kind of digitalized to private personnel issues or child abuse. Please not attempt to regress the issue at this time or to be ruled out of order. Just as a reminder, the board does not enter into a discussion during general public comment. Is there any members of the public who wish to comment on that?
One more to where, one more to the left.
We'll move you up.
Yeah.
Thank you again for the opportunity to address the board. I've spoken privately with one trustee and two member representatives of the fans of this night's action. At least one member acknowledged that through the technology it can leverage to pass this rule free of discretionary notice to be applied elsewhere in the budget. All three, two board members and a trustee admitted they've been limited clear access to the latitude of forty percent. One forward. Shouldn't there be absolute certainty in this regard, particularly when tens of millions of dollars are at stake? All we're explicitly claiming is state for our district's current budgetary straits. But little if anything can be done at the state, at least until January twenty twenty seven. More practically, April of twenty twenty seven. So what is to be done in the interim? Against this backdrop, should the district be considering permanently closing an elementary school which has served its community for, so, served its community for near fifty years?
Thank you. Were any other?
Yeah, yes. I did, so, yeah, my name is Jennifer Skogley, S K O G L E Y. And I am an elementary music teacher here in Helena. Back in January, I gave the board a brief glimpse into my elementary music reality for this year and how far behind my students were. I'd like to provide you an update on how they progressed since January, and this is as of about a week ago when I wrote this. In January, I reported that my kindergartners and first graders were each three lessons behind where they normally would be. That holds true as of early May, and some of the kindergarten classes were closer to four lessons even. In January, I reported that my fourth and fifth graders were two steps behind the normal pacing in their twelve step literacy program, music literacy. As of the second week of May, they're all three to five steps behind the normal pacing, so they have lost more ground this spring than they did in the fall. Lower Montessori was two steps behind the normal literacy pacing, but they're now three steps behind. Third grade remains three steps behind their normal literacy pacing as they were in January. So they didn't change a whole lot. But unfortunately, no class would finish one unit of music literacy this year. And usually I think that in a traditional year, I can get through one, but nobody will accomplish that though this year. Another thing that has been very frustrating to me this spring is how little depth I am able to teach them. This year, it's very much about skimming the circus of curriculum goals like music perform, dynamics, music literacy, and improvisation, because we do not have the time to dive deep and make sure the students are able to master these skills. The district wants students to achieve mastery in their subjects, but I am unable to help my students do that because of their reduced instruction time. Here's a fact that I suspect not very many people know. I do not hold the same degree as my classroom teacher colleagues. I am not certified to teach in the general education classroom. Because I hold a bachelor of music education degrees, I am certified in the state of Montana to teach grades K through twelve in any form of music. While my general ed colleagues hold an elementary general education degree or something to that variety. There's lots of different names for that degree. They don't take the same courses I did in college. They were not taught elementary pedagogy or instrumental techniques, music theory, or oral skills. By their own admission, they don't understand the music curriculum, and they don't know how to use our curriculum materials and tools. If we want our students achieving mastery in music, we need certified trained music educators in the music room, and we need to see our students well out there. The reduction in music staff and instruction time does not just affect the elementary. The effects will creep up into the middle school and high schools early as next fall because of this fifth grade class. And it will only compound in a negative fashion from there. If we were to return to two lessons every week, the timeout for field trips or starbase, for example, would not have such a negative impact on our students' journey toward mastery, not just in music, but in library and P D as well. And once again, employers will work to come to a decision that is in the benefit of every elementary student in Helena. They, these are serious, oh, excuse me, there are serious inequities that can be balanced this spring. And while that decision is not easy, nor is it painless, it is one that should be made. Thank you very much for your time and your service to our students. I know what you're facing is not easy, and I thank you sincerely for your efforts to address these inequities. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Ms. Shannon Thomas.
So personally, Jane, and then all my community teenage children.
Thank you. I had no intention of speaking tonight, except that the agenda just got reversed. So that instead of approving our teacher contract, now you're going to talk about how STARS funds are going to be used. So I'm a teacher in this district. I'm a thirty-five year veteran of teaching. I have taught in Helena for twenty years, close, very close to twenty years. I taught on both sides of town. So I spent six years over at Helena. And I spent the last twelve years at C R N, I understand, middle school. And in the time that I've been here, I've seen decisions kind of be like passed along and passed along and passed along when difficult decisions come. But I advocate for this district constantly. If you look in the paper on Saturday, there's op ed on safety that was written, and it's my op ed signed by other people to support that decision making. I'm always advocating for students in this district. My students were the ones who designated manuals last year. We go above and beyond. My daughters graduated from this district with top honors in this district. That STARS money is something I spent on the rapid response team advocating for that bill all legislative session, and it had a purpose. And the teachers in this district got that money for this district by changing our salary schedule. So if there's any intention of using it for any other purpose than to give us raises that have already been negotiated and accepted, I just don't think that that is right. And that is my public comment. Thank you.
Any other comment in person? Or is there any comment online?
There are not very many requests for comments online at this time.
Right. Thanks, thanks everyone for speaking, and I think we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the presentation by peaceful voting.
This is the whites giving a fatter word beginning.
I think we can give it a shot. It might have been the whole part.
If possible. Hey.
It's high tech here.
Totally nice work.
We are high tech, look at us. I'm Kelly Bodecker. I am the principal here. I am lucky to be a part of this community. This is my, the end of my fourth year. I hope you got to look at the pamphlet. Some of the things that I just wanted to highlight. You see our academic performance, but that's only a half a year's growth from fall to winter. We don't have our data completed yet. We're still doing high ready testing right now. I can tell you that one grade is done, hence our first grade in reading. Yeah, right there, it sounded like Van referred to that. And they have come in at seventy-two percent honor above for reading. So I'll vote for our first grade teachers, our good grade teachers. So can you be proud of our teachers here? And I invite, I want to call just to our highly trained teachers. Three years ago, we took on letters training, and that is eight hundred and sixty hours and up to two years of training that we did as a school. Just us, we got our coach, who I, Amber Burn's not here, I think she's the best coach in our district. But she was able, well, she said, I'll get trained to be the trainer, and did. And now she's going to train other teachers in our district, not just in our school. But she's going to spread her knowledge. We're super lucky to have her in this district, and especially here. After we took that training, we always talked about when you know better, you do better. And what we found out was that we needed better phonics. And so we implemented Youthly three years ago. I think Brooke was also one of our first early adopters in this. And that has really made a difference for our kids. It's closed the gap. It's systematic. It's explicit teaching of phonics. We did not have that in our, our core curriculum at that point, and so we went ahead and did that. That's now going out to the district and well. But this year, we decided that math, as you guys, I'm sure have looked at our scores, math has just been lagging behind for our kids, especially out of COVID. We knew that that was going to be a problem, and we've seen that in our scores. They're just lagging and lagging. So we decided to take on a new training this year. We took Graham Lecturer, Foundations of Numerical Reasoning, eighty-one percent of our teachers took it. This is on their own time. They're not getting paid for any of this. This is, this is them wanting to be better teachers. So we all took that. I took it too. What I learned was I'm a really bad estimator. And I am not great at math. That's what I learned out of that training was that I, I probably could go back to kindergarten and start again. But what we've done is we've challenged each other to get better, and we're seeing that in our I ready scores. Our halfway through the year, we had already increased twenty-three percent into the honor above. We're going to see that better when our spring data comes. We've really, between the change to Eureka Square, which was an incredibly change for our district, then our teachers, who wanted to build their capacity, that combination is going to benefit our kids a lot. So I have to applaud my staff because this is them wanting to do the best they can do for our kids. This is just above and beyond. So I just want to make sure that you guys know how great our staff is here. Let's see. So some highlights of this year. We are lucky, K T V H has kind of adopted us. This is not in any of their stuff, sorry. This is just extra. This is just a bonus for you. They kind of adopted us with the Give a Child a Book Fair. If you've seen those ads on TV where they're asking for donations, that comes right here. And this year, we had two free book fairs. We just wrapped up the last one last week. Each book fair, every kid in our school got four books, so a total of eight free books to every kid in the school. And that's through the generosity of our community, but it's also because K T V H just kind of adopted us. We're super lucky to be able to have that. This year, we also introduced a lunch for a buddy program. We had twenty-one students match up with community members. This was kind of spearheaded by a, a community member and a teacher here, and we got it going. They come every week. They hardly ever miss. They eat with the kid that they've been matched up with. They go after recess with them. Some of them did Christmas presents together. They've really done some bonding, and it's helped those kids. Those are some kids who just needed that extra adult in their life to make a difference. And so that's been really great. We're hoping to expand it. I just met with them, and they think they can get about ten more volunteers. They all go through the background process and all of that, so they're clear to come in. And we get permission from their parents, but it has been a really good addition to our school. I'm glad Lisa's here. Lisa's been a part of several grants that we've gotten in the last little bit. One is for, our kids just didn't have Cub t-shirts. We just didn't have them. We didn't bang them. We didn't have a spirit store. And so through the generosity of H E F, we were able to buy every student a Cub t-shirt, and then we give them to our incoming kindergartners every year, kind of as they're signing on, like, you know how athletes sign to go to college, and you're signing on to become a Cub. So every kid comes in, and so that was, they got us off the ground on that. It's really promoted a sense of belonging and pride in being here at Broadwater. We're getting new, I wish Gary could grab us the outside for me. We're getting the fancy, what do you say, interactive displays. We're going to have one for every classroom coming this summer. I pinched and saved my principal budget for the last four years and got enough to get every classroom, including the gym, the library, the special ed room, and the music room, an interactive display. So we're going to be high tech, which is not going to be until Gary can get it done. They're sitting somewhere. They're here, so we're, we're just waiting for installation this summer. So we're really excited about that. Let's see, we also through H E F and through our really, we have a great parent council here. They have raised a ton of money for us. We do a readathon. We've raised anywhere from sixteen to twenty-two thousand dollars each year, and then they just pour that back into our students. And so with the combination of H E F and our parent council, we have brought in the Holter Artist in Residence every year for the last four years. And then this year, we brought in Cohesion Dance, and they are phenomenal. That was through H E F, and it has been such a great addition. We get to start our year next year with two more months with cohesion. So they, they've done a great job for us. We updated our habitat. Some of you who went on the tour, H E F funded that too. Look at you, Lisa's like, Lisa show. Twenty years ago, that was one of the first projects, was our habitat. And our furniture was getting a little rickety, and so we wrote a grant to get new furniture out there so that we can make it an outdoor learning space. And we had Tom Kane's class at Capital High School who had that furniture, and they delivered it about three weeks ago, and that was helped fund three dollars. They're going to come and see it on Friday. We, we have more funds happening this week. If you want to come back tomorrow, we could use volunteer to in the afternoon for field day. We have field day, the barbecue, and our talent show left this year, so we're going to end this year kind of celebrating just how hard staff has been to burn. And we're going to break in here. Questions you guys have? Some of you had asked about the, how our, our school is kind of laid out. So we do have a Montessori pod here, two lower Montessoris and an upper. We do not have the kindergarten. We don't have an extra room. If you took the tour, you noticed we don't have an open classroom. Every room is taken. So we, right now, we have two kindergartners, two firsts, one second, two thirds, fourth, and a fourth. But I'm both, fifth grader, I think, of our three Montessori classrooms. So we have a total of thirds from the classrooms this year. About two hundred and seventy kids, but we are in Raleigh one today, and we'll start tomorrow. Good, a new fourth grader. Yeah.
So just referencing your math, so you looked at your scores, and you said the score is mighty, and you had the, you lead, what else prompt did you do? How did you determine the grade of the bunch, or how did you get that?
So we started looking at different classes that we can take. So letters is kind of, letters is the language essentials of teacher reading and spelling, which is awkward because it's spelled wrong. I don't miss the irony of that. So we wanted to find kind of a letters-like program that had evidence-based and research-backed. And so Graham Lecturer is kind of a leading math person, and it, there's a part two to the course. So we pay for this, sorry, I should have told you that. We get some sub grant funding through Title I, and that's how we pay for some of this. So we want to, there's a second part to this, and our goal is, if we have that money again, we're going to take that again. So it's just kind of a national workshop, and we could do it online, and we did it all together. We watched together and talked together.
What do you think, I know you personally learned something. What do you think of this now?
Don't want to chime in. These, these fine teachers took the.
Why you remember sense? Has, like, I would, I was the, the school where it was just like algorithm, like you didn't learn why. You just learned like the steps and how to do it. And I've struggled a lot like with estimating, mental math, just as an adult, but this like background for these foundations for math, like I feel like that's just really helped me get like a big number sense. Now I can like teach my kids better. I don't know. My kids, my first graders, I would say are better at me than math, just like based on what I've learned. And like when I've been able to show them, they're like able to, it's like, I don't know. I don't even play it. Yeah. Doesn't ever sense.
I think also one of the common concerns as students progress from kindergarten up to fifth grade is their fluency. So whether that's your addition or subtraction fluency, or as they get up into fourth and fifth grade, they're more patient and division fluency. Knowing their facts quickly has always been a concern, and this professional development really helped us to understand the progression of fluency. And so it builds on each other, so it helped us to better understand the building blocks and then gave us a lot of tools that we could use to help improve fluency on our group.
And they're really fun things, like a lot of them, I mean, we're kind of nerdy people who like teaching and learning, but a lot of them are really fun, that kids are highly engaged, like a lot of game-based learning that just felt good. So we were learning about three act tasks. We were building collections. Because when you think about the number one thousand four hundred and twelve, what does that mean to a kid? Or does it mean, they know to ten, like what ten looks like, but how do you understand what that looks like? So that's kind of what this is about, really understanding what numbers mean. I was an algorithm person as well. I remember doing division and not understanding that that had to do with place spelling. I just knew I put an X there because my teacher told me to put an X, and I did what they said. And now I know why, because I'm doing this, and that's what we're trying, we're trying to get better at so we can help our kids get better at it.
That's great, interesting, because last time I was here, I was in a Montessori class, and that's when I got to all the various types of manipulatives. And I could see it, you know, how it makes sense, but I wasn't taught that. So it seems kind of like we're teaching differently than the way a lot of our teachers were taught. So they are lacking the language to teach in this sense, so we've got to get everyone.
And colleges aren't teaching it that way anymore, so we're still, we're still catching up. And Montessori is a great example of using those manipulatives, and those kids understand numbers better because they use golden beads and they use the mats, and so they see it in a different way.
You feel like it's been effective?
I do. I mean, I, I'm a very estimator now. What do you guys?
I would also, sorry, I'm just terrible at all right now, but I would like to add that it doesn't like change any part of your recap. It's just allow us to like do it better in like in a more tactile way where our kids have like developed better number sense and better fluency. So it like complemented what we're already doing. It just, I think, prepared us to be better teachers in how we can face.
None of our learning ever is supplementing the curriculum. It's about building teacher capacity to be better. So it's not in place of anything. It's just building ourselves up.
It's hard, because we have, you know, literacy, we have some really good literacy programs for so long, and now we're trying to quickly catch up on the math side. So anytime we can accelerate that, which is great. Thank you for like taking the initiative to, to do that on top of implementing a new curriculum.
Yeah, they're amazing. They're really good. Other questions?
I have a question, this is so common. I guess it's always awesome to be in schools and to get to have a chance to sort of show off if you have a lot to brag about and not bring any opportunities to just like play it out there for people who gather up like we do. So I just wanted to, to thank you and all of our staff for the work that you're doing. And I did a quick little, where you mentioned with the first graders, we're seventy-two percent at our grade level. I used to do what the national statistic was, and it's like sixty-six percent. And you've got fifty-one percent of your kids in some level of poverty and seventeen, I don't know. So to pull those kinds of success, that is just a tremendous achievement.
It, it really is, and I, I do want to say like, we're the second highest grade reduced lunch school in this city. And our kids are making progress because our teachers know how important it is. And they're the most important people in that room, and they know it, and they own it, and they do it every day. And that's, that's, I think, what's making the difference, is they know that every minute counts for these kids. That's how we break cycles. That's how we get kids. Where do we need them to be?
I'm guessing we just don't feel like they're part of some brand experimental figure, but they are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, has your frame reduced lunch population or inventory population changed much recently throughout this year?
I think, I, I think our frame reduced lunch is down. I would ask Caitlin, I think we were in the sixties maybe a year ago, so we're down. One of our problems is we didn't ask for kids to fill those forms out for the last couple of years, and now we need to. So it could go back up. It might fluctuate again, because we didn't have them fill out the forms. We'll see. But we've kind of, I mean, I think this is the lowest since I've been here, is fifty-one. And then McKinney-Bento, we've been all over the map. We've been in the high twenties. We've been in the low teens. So we're kind of, it's pretty cyclical, and we are even totally identifying everybody we shouldn't be. We have a lot of double digits that I think we don't know as well, like we should. Well, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Come back anytime.
Coming tomorrow, where's your running shoes?
A water bottle.
Sunscreener?
Yes.
So we'll move on to the consent action items. But personnel actions, feelings could remain in my life or self, or have many, which you can accept those. Sure, I would move that we accept the consent action. So all those in favor of accepting the consent act and that you wanted to, wait. Is there any public comment? Sorry. Any online comment? Any board comment? All right, all those in favor, think of my by saying aye. All those opposed? All right. Notice that trustee has come to someone, I'm not sure if she voted.
I just hopped on. I just got my connection, so I did not hear that dialogue, and I'm happy not to vote, but I'm on now.
Thank you, must be on. The motion passed, seven zero. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the reposition item for information, the budget STARS discussion. And just to kind of put that in a little perspective, why it's not here. The STARS Act is probably the most consequential, at least in terms of dollars, that came out of the twenty-five legislature. It was very, the way the law was written, it's very individualized by district, how those dollars had to be used and what everyone at the table, how we had to consider it. So we just kind of wanted to talk amongst ourselves, and any phone holders, you guys, there are. So, um, we just kind of wanted to talk amongst ourselves of, and any from the whole of you guys, there, there's not going to be a fill in. This is just an item for information about how the act worked, how we write it. Um, and just kind of make it clear about what money's, how it is going to be used. There has been some, some discussion in the community that it doesn't need to be used for teacher and staff pay. Um, I believe ours is being used for teacher and staff pay, but we just wanted to like explain the rationality behind that so that it can all be understood, especially as we go into action regarding our department. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Wells, although there's, you know, feel free to jump in. Anyone who has any questions or who wants to pipe in. There's other experts who are here. You can pop more about, um, just many elements of how the STAR Act was used.
Oh, before I get started, Chairman Key, I'm just looking at the housekeeping on this. So we pulled, we're moving the agenda, but you have two items for information. Right? We have CFS here and STARS. So are we going to break apart the two items and move STARS above action? And then come back into recommendation for items of information on the second page?
That was my initial plan yet, just kind of.
Let's do that. Just for the fact that I, we've got it in the back and I'm making sure that he's no introduction to the mic here pretty quick or not. So it sounds like we're going to wait on that too. Okay? Yeah. Uh, STARS, I, I think that, um, through the session, first of all, inform us. We are very thankful for session as you noted to as the introduction of statements that probably the most influential piece of legislation for education, uh, with a lack of, of public education funding uh, for quite some time. I believe that, uh, school association has mentioned uh, that in the last four years, we're about 10, 10 and a half percent, um, below inflationary increases. If we had just kept up with inflation, um, we wouldn't be where we are today. So we're thankful for that money. I want to look it up, but I think it was over a hundred million dollars. Perhaps that was back into new money, if you will, uh, back into public education. So it is helpful and we're thinking, uh, putting perspective from the last, since I was here and coming out of COVID, in the last four years, we've been able to negotiate with very little and also very little that were, um, attached to our general fund, which was at that point for both districts combined, $6 million, um, in, in a deficit. And so for the STARS money, and I personally have said that this money, though knowing that it's, it can be used for others, but the STAR money itself, student teacher advancement for results and success, that's what's come, that's the act. It's for students. The intent of it was for staff, staff compensation. And I've noticed that a couple of times um, through our, our board of work sessions, our budget meetings. Um, and quite frankly, uh, at a board meeting to say that the intention is to use the STAR money for uh, compensation through not just teachers. And I think it's important that HGA has acknowledged the fact that it's not just for staff. It's all, it's not for teachers, it's for all staff. And so we've made that, um, abundantly clear is that that's in my intent. Uh, and with recognition that it could be in operations, but I've chose not to put it in operations for the simple fact that we haven't been able to negotiate for quite some time. Um, and so this, if you will, it's almost a carve out. It's a set of money that we need to have to, uh, burden the general fund further with negotiating. And doing so in good faith, uh, last year, two years ago, I recall offering at 0.5. And when inflation is over three and four percent and it's generally difficult for our staff to understand that the, the races that they're doing and they're working as hard as they are with less individuals and expecting more, is that we continue to do so far sub inflationary increases for our staff. And so for our STARS, um, money, we are thankful that we were able to use that across spectrum, across our district for all staff members, so we can negotiate. Uh, we, you'll see before us, HGA and Health School District partnered with Diane Groves, which is the consensus base, um, um, process has really come to, one, offer a package that I believe was ratified heavily by the teachers unit. But two, that process has brought us closer together and as a staff, as a community, as a district. And so I knew that going in, in publicly made these statements several times that my, my expectations, my intentions and aspirations, brain, where you call them, is that I wanted to use the STARS money for compensation. Period. Though I know that it could have been used for operations and operations means anything in general fund, which could be property liability, just sat in a meeting today where, uh, potentially our natural gas went up 9.4%. Another $55,000 in natural gas increases. So operations meaning those things that we are purchasing or for spending out of our inner local, we could have offset that with our STARS money, but then something goes away. And that would have been the ability to compensate our staff at a rate that I felt was, uh, necessary and appropriate. And so there's, there's really the intent. Um, if you talk to the bill sponsor and those that come about, they said, once you meet this step, the requirement of obtaining the STARS money, because it, it wasn't an opportunity for you to save, raise your hand and then give you start money. Right? There was an op, you had to go through a process. And the process was that we had to reach, um, a status in which we would then be able to receive the 2.2 million dollars. And that, what I'm saying that is that we had to adjust our matrix on the bottom end. Truly, the STARS Act was about raising, making any teacher pay. And then once you were done with that, then you met that threshold within the five-year period. Then you could use that money where you felt it was necessary and needed. And so that's where myself, my team, uh, decided it was really around all staff compensation. But to do that, we have to spend about $350,000 to get into the, um, the ability to even obtain the STARS money. So we had to spend money to get the money, if you will. And really that was in efforts to raise low starting teacher pay. But as you did that, we also had to fix the matrix. If you're going to embed new money at the lower end, then you couldn't have lower teachers make more money than mid-range teachers, right? So you had to fix the matrix across the, the spectrum. And that, that's about, uh, roughly to 350,000. Janelle apologizes. She could be here tonight with more important things such as a, uh, grandson, eighth grade graduation, um, trumped us. So she's on me. Is she on? She's still, she tried to get on. She just texted me and said, I can't get on. Um, can answer questions if she gives it back. Uh, so that was the intent of the STARS, uh, and it has been from the beginning. And I made note of that through several presentations, that was my intention.
Yes, I mean, any questions? I mean, I'm on the same page. I know when we were training, I remember that was before the session. And we went to the really loud ones. But our presenters and the leaders said, you decided we wanted to advocate for this, um.
I'm going to do a sound check. I've got a bell cooler in my ear and I'm not sure if you guys can hear. Can you hear back there? We may have to speak just a little bit louder.
Okay. So, yeah. I've been told to keep it down. Yeah. And that was my understanding from the get-go before the session. There were a couple of us that wanted to participate in the session, especially in relation to STARS. And when we were in Missoula, we were, uh, yeah, trained by MTSBA, SAM and different members. And it was, the primary focus on my understanding was to raise all staff pay. And then every MTSBA meeting throughout the session was updates on what like the business clerks needed to do, the calculator, the formula. So, um, I'm just saying, saying that was always my impression that that's what the STARS was going to be used for. Not only for our district, but a majority, because we're all just questions about how to use the calculator, how to get the matrix adjusted so that we could, um, be eligible to increase pay for all of our staff. So that's all I wanted to do. And
trustee has one.
And just note that, uh, as I said, Janelle's not with us. She is. She's on. So for a hell of a long, if you have a question for her, you better get it soon.
Uh, trustee has one. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just want to, um, uh, raise my support, knowledge of my support. Um, if we go back and look at the history, um, last year we were extremely tight on money. It was a long and very emotional, in my opinion, negotiations. We finally came up with a one and a half percent raise, which I believe is one of the lowest raises that we've been able to afford in the last, um, you know, good chunk of time. And at the same time, um, the costs of, of the benefits went up. So for many employees, as we know, and we heard a lot in public comment, that they actually had a reduction in take-home pay, which, um, was not something that we could really address, but something that really struck home, at least for me. Um, in addition to that, we, um, to cut costs, we reduce staff, which increased the responsibilities. Um, some examples of that are the music and PE teachers who had to teach a lot more kids. Six out of seven in the high school, we reduced at one administrator, which means someone has to pick up those duties. We increased the student to teacher ratio. We added combo classes in some cases when teachers, you know, maybe uh, was not their first choice. And, um, so I just want to say that it's been some hard times and I feel like the staff, it was kind of hard at the beginning, but they have stepped up and done a great job. And if this money is intended for staff raises and it's affordable, I think that it's an absolutely the right way to go. Um, we also have learned over time that if we let certain employee groups drop too far below, um, going wages, it ends up, um, causing a lot of, uh, trouble. And the, these moves also, uh, fall in line with our compensation philosophy that we have worked so hard to, um, put in place. So I just wanted to, uh, state my support for the administration and the union, um, earmarking this money for staff raises.
Thank you, trustee.
I, I had a question. Superintendent Wells, I knew about the 350,000 for beginning teachers. So we also had to count on some more money in order to make the matrix work.
No, the, the 300, nearly 350,000 dollars was fixing the matrix, including uh, those cells off to the right, right, right-hand corner, um, upwards or actually the left-hand corner. So that 350 is what it is for all of them to purchase the right, their ability to get the 2.2 million.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. I do, I just want to say, I sat on the budget consensus committee. Uh, that was almost a full school year. Uh, it took us a while to kind of coalesce and, uh, have someone come in and explain the very convoluted stage funding formula. But I, I distinctly remember, you know, the high school wasn't in deficit. And I sat on the high school little group. It was actually the suggestion to go to six out of seven actually came from staff. So they took that upon themselves and they took a deficit and to turn that part of our district, the high school district in, into black by doing more. And I just want to make sure that we honor that.
Maybe I, I might just, um, add on at the end, they did that. And I think there was also, um, the intention to make that happen for as the shortest period of time possible, but that is going to be a temporary solution. Um, so then as soon as feasible, we would move that back to 500, so. But I also take your point that, and also we heard about it tonight, just the, um, you know, incredible commitment that our teachers have. They step up and even though we're asking them to do more, um, they say, okay, we will. So this, this opportunity, um, I think it does align well with the intention, not only to attract new teachers by, uh, increasing, you know, base pay, starting pay, but also to retain teachers. I mean, we don't want to just get them. We want to figure out how to retain them. So to, um, use the STARS money for, uh, compensation seems very much in line with the overall project, which is to trap and retain.
I did a little research with, uh, asking Sam School Administrators of Montana. Have, are there other districts out there that are just intentionally using the STARS money in another facet, right? In operation, if you will. And to Sam's leadership, unaware of it, not, not that he's heard. So for the most part, you'll see the state of Montana, um, utilizing this money as if intended for, um, staff compensation. Remember early in this bill, it was a teacher incentive, right? It was for teachers and they've changed that. It still has teacher in, in, um, the terminology in, in the title of it. But there were talks, as you know, from in legislation, as you attested to, that they also want to make sure, yes, teachers are, are very important, but it was for all staff as well. And so that's really the, the intent that we wanted to, uh, impose here in the Health School District is for all staff. Uh, and that's, and that's what we did during negotiations.
I know that, that there were challenges last year with the avenues of health insurance coverage costs. What does that affect this year compared to last year? Um, does that cut into that 2% raise at the moment here?
It, healthcare's going up. And so we don't have that information to, um, that, that's a great question. As a trustee, um, we have, we've had some history where this board has been asked to vote on healthcare initiatives with very little information. So over the last couple of years, Rich Franco and Carrie Mizell at HR has done a nice job of, um, updating the board, keeping them abreast. And then we have a trustee that sits, um, on the health committee, uh, the secretary does. And so she's been giving during our committee reports every month, an update. To answer that question is, yes, communication's coming in, but most likely, I don't know very many places in the country where healthcare is going down. Now that being said, we made it an aspiration that we were going to talk about and actively manage the rising healthcare. And so through that 340B has, um, been, so we've unbundled, been able to see if we can take our pharmacy plan and look at that closely, bring in a, um, third-party administrator to help us manage that. We think there might be some savings there coupled with a, with a federally qualified program, which would decrease the cost to both the employer and to the, to the self-funded plan. We also have House Bill 332 that we are still in the market for. We're not sure how that's going to do, but it's still alive. We should get those numbers back in, uh, August, so that we'll have to make a decision if it's a good fit for the school district by November. And then the health committee has also done a really great job of examining our self, self-funded plan to see if there are some savings within it to reorganize our own plan. So, and then we negotiated also additional uh, amount to help cover those costs that we heard earlier, where though we had a one, one and a half percent increase, because healthcare went up, we actually saw, many of us saw a decrease in their take-home pay. And so with all that being, um, worked on, we're not just sitting back and going, I wonder what it's going to be. We're actually taking an active stance against it. But to answer that question, I do believe that you'll see an increase probably in healthcare. And Rich Franco will bring that. I just got an email this morning and we're getting much closer. He's probably going to send an email back to this board, uh, on some numbers here within the next week. So we'll have the data points versus think of level four. Do you have to make a vote on it, June? Debbie?
I, I just think that given that, that's something that needs to keep in mind with a, a 2% raise with any sort of increase in staff payout for health insurance, you know, that might cut into that. Um, I mean, I have so many friends that are my age that are teachers that are looking to buy a house. It's all, it's the price of inflation, you know, of housing has gotten so significantly in comparison to their pay. So I just, that needs to be a part of the conversation we're talking about.
Procedure question maybe, but I recognize it a little to get, you had to qualify for the STARS money. So we had to bring up A at the low end, but then there was another thing that we had to to address in order to qualify for the STARS money. I, I honestly, I'm sorry, guys. I can't remember exactly what it is, but, um, I know that we wouldn't have received the STARS money at all, at least from what I have seen. If, if everyone hadn't agreed to that, and so.
Well, the negotiation, yeah, so there's agreement would have been through the negotiating period, right? So that, what, uh, our HGA expectations and the school district expectations would have been wrapped up into our consensus base. And that's what And that's where the agreement piece comes from. But what's more important is that there were two factors in which you need to meet either one. And one, there was a specific number. And you could think of a small classy school that had to have their teachers adding number, and I forget, 43, 711, or whatever that number was. Or you have to have a, you have to meet a percentage of your staff that fits the average teacher salary within your district.
Yep.
And in that, you had a five-year period in which you had to meet those thresholds. And it started at 62%, 64, 66, 68, 70. In five years, you had to have 70% of your staff at your average teacher salary. We in negotiations wanted to make sure that we were far enough away from the 62% that the calculation wasn't going to compromise us saying, or OPI saying, if I made it, we want your money back. So we wanted to get a buffer, unbundling that. So we, consensus, we landed on 60, 60% the first year, with the expectation to be in a fully 70% in year two, so that we don't have to address it again. So we'll be at 70 the following year. That's the plan. Start, we went to 66. That cost us about $350,000. And now it's 70, and we'll pull the calculations on that as well. Interesting note that I reported here two weeks or three weeks ago that the governor had 12, 11 or 12 educational bills on his desk waiting to be signed. They go back, dust has settled. It had to be because OPI then was able to send Janelle her funding data sheets last Friday. So now we can start really working the numbers because we know what those look like. We know the impacts of bills on the education funding. So we'll have better information for you at the end of this Friday.
Another question, what I don't think you told. If we, if we had not spent Stars money on staff pay, would we even have received it? And what I mean is, we needed, we needed to agree, as we're negotiating, which required some concessions on both sides. If we hadn't agreed to those things and which required the use of this 2.2 million to go right into staff pay, we may even have gotten...
We, we knew collectively from our negotiating team that we were, we were in the process, negotiations, with the understanding that the Stars school most likely would pass. And if it didn't, we would come right back to the table again because a $2 million plus increase in the ability to negotiate was far more than what we were able to do in the last couple of years, given the fact that our general fund was in a deficit and any negotiations was going to further put the general funds in the deficit. So there's an understanding. Now, there, there were talks early in Stars where people like, I think, actually representatives or individuals may have said, you don't want the money. Don't go through the process. You don't have to take any money. But if you do, here's the requirements of what you need. And so then it gets into a point where I have to look at the HTA and say, all we're going to do is just put money on the lowest end and we won't negotiate at the time, or very little time. So this would allow us to be consistent across our, not only our union, but also across our district. It certainly supported the general fund in that aspect.
And we'll get to that later, next item of production. But if we hadn't used Stars money for salaries, what would the rate of school be this year? Five?
We think across our, across our, just our teacher, well, let's go across the district. Across the district, a 1% raise is nearly $600,000, probably a little bit more today. So a 1% raise is about a $600,000 increase for all payable groups. If you look at a 2%, and you're like a 1.2, remember, we are in a deficit. So what does it look like? It looks like the last three years in which we're trying to compensate staff for what they deserve with a very limited, well, an underfunded budget. So I mean, I don't want, that's why we negotiate. But I'm sure if I come to Jane and say, we'd like to do a 1.5 or just a 0.5 again, it would be really difficult to have a contract ratified for us to move forward with today. So I guess to answer that question, what would it look like? Take your deficit, right now it's 1.6 in the elementary and about $800,000 in the high school that's to deposit it. And you add $400,000 for a 1%, add another $800,000 deficit to it for a 2%, and see how far we can go below and still rely on the interlocal fund to balance us at the end of the day. So in that same, same aspect as we were last couple of years. On full circle, ready? That's why I think for legislation, what they allow us to do for this, this year, and next. First time we've had a two-year contract with the law. When are there some building to do with that?
Why, I mean, I, I kind of just wanted to see, like, labor, what would it look like? But I totally, I threw the approach that we balanced the budget in a crisis last year, and those cuts were, in my mind, I never wanted them to be around. It will have teachers who are looking for it, and through all this money, it was just totally unsustainable and not, and certainly the work they do, the sacrifices they made. So I think we're really, we don't have Stars money in staff salaries.
We still have work to do.
Yeah, we're not even, we're not really even caught up.
No.
You know, we're just not falling behind.
Yeah, I love your positivity, but I have to point out, like, the numbers say we did not balance our budget.
No, I know, we didn't.
So...
We were able to end the meeting.
You know, we're still, we're still withdrawing from interlocal, and it looks like we will still be withdrawing from the interlocal, but potentially not at a rate in which we will kill our interlocal before we get to the decennial study. So that's important because we do, we do have another point in the future which we can advocate for, just the big look at, at funding, besides just like, okay, obviously pay, that type of thing. But we can overall look at funding. But I think that's the important thing, is we're, we're still running the deficit, even, even as we are, we've mentioned, Rex just mentioned the gas and, you know, Northwestern Electric, 17% liability. All, we're about to talk about curriculum, that costs money. But we are in a better situation, which we think we can live along. However, we haven't fully addressed the problem. So we just need to keep that.
And then we have more hard-wringing decisions to make at HTR, which sucks. But I don't mind.
Back to the regular issues, then, it's, we're still unfunded.
Exactly.
You know, I would, I would argue that we started at interlocal this year at $6 million. We spent about 2.1, 2.2 million dollars. So we're sitting, we're almost at 3.8 at the end. We maybe did, may come back to 3.8. We might start next year at 4.8 million dollars with our interlocal. We spent $2 million, that puts you down to $2 million. I'm really close to that threshold where that's, that's close. We know that we didn't pass the tech levy, so we're going to have to allocate some additional funds, $1 million at the levy, $1 million out of interlocal. I'm going to have to throw another $900,000 into the, out of interlocal, back into tech, so we can do the things that we have to do, non-negotiable. We have to have tech. Without that tech levy, so right now, I'm at about a million dollars. Right, this, it doesn't get any better. What we're talking about tonight is a Stars money that allowed us to do something phenomenal for our staff. But that's one aspect of what we're working on. The rest of it is that we still have a budget deficit. And that's a dark place. And we have got to make some decisions moving forward about how we're going to manage that deficit. Right? So yes, I'm thankful for the Stars, and that was great. It was, but now we have to move forward and also think about, what do we do with the rest of it? And we have aspirations, you know, we talked about five to seven in the high school. We want to use P E. There's things that we would, we aspire to, but we've got to figure out how we're going to move through this next month and a half, two months.
So then, as you're saying, Rex, I mean, that was kind of what my point was going to be too. This doesn't allow us to still immediately say, we're going to bring back these things. We're going to fix what we'd already taken away. This is providing us a little bit of relief, but it doesn't still immediately say, okay, now this is our destiny. Now we need to bring back, you know, five to sevens. And I think that is just important to recognize that we absolutely needed to do this for compensation, but it does not mean it's bringing up enough money to now where we can go back and backtrack some shit that had to be taken away.
It didn't, it didn't decrease on the front side our general fund. The Stars money didn't take a deficit, we make it less. Helped us not to be further in debt through a process of negotiations.
Okay.
I did just want to comment that the most recent budget meeting showed we had $5.5 million overbudgeted, basically, after all the salaries for the year. So maybe it's not as much of a deficit as it may be. Our starting point, maybe the numbers are a little more conservative than actual. I'd be really curious to see how much overflowed into that interlocal of the year from overbudgeting.
And when Janelle adds that, I'll bring it to you. I did visit with her about that, and she said, I think they misunderstood me. So I know that she's going to, she'll come back and throw that back up when she's at the table.
And am I correct that some of those, that overflows that goes to the interlocal are sometimes pots of money that are destined for a specific purpose? We cannot have flexibility to move that into the general fund.
Yeah, that's where the interlocal fund has always been. When I was, I have to go back there. When there were, prior to the interlocal fund, you would have, say, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, someone would say, we got four, we got $400,000, we got $4 left in your, in your classroom account. Either you're going to lose it, or you go buy a marker. Right, so we saw this rapid expense of, of purchasing. Like, we just, we spent it down before we lost it. So then legislation said, we'll make an interlocal so you don't have to spend it like that. You can put it into account and then loses its ability to be earmarked for a specific area, right? So you can have transportation dollars come into the interlocal, and then we could buy a marker and blow it. So there's some flexibility in legislation, said that's how we're going to spend that money. So you could, you could fill that with different plots that as you get to the end of the year, rather than hurry up and spending and you may not need it. That's why you used to see closets with lots of paper because if we didn't want to lose it, we just bought paper. You don't have to do that anymore. And so those come from multiple areas. And when I was younger, that's where tech would come in and say, I want it all. Right, into the year, they buy carts and computers. So that's really a part where tech used to be able to be funded at the end of the year.
Just a quick question about interlocals. Because I've been here serving boards, you know, during COVID. And there was a lot of, it just, the interlocal got bigger than it, than you're probably used to. But in a normal, in normal times, like we're in now, it really doesn't replenish that quickly. Is that your experience?
That is correct. Before COVID, and when Ms. Mickelson was here, I don't believe you had a lot in interlocal. There was a couple hundred thousand and a half desks to start out. And then obviously during COVID, the federal SIR funds were responsible for paying other budgetary needs. And so you didn't have to use the state funding mechanisms to pay those. And so those were then transferred back to your interlocal. So the federal SIR funds helped you build up what I feel like was great vision because it allowed us to do what we've been doing here for the last three years and four, to get ourselves back in shape. If we didn't have that, we would have made decisions year one that we've made over the last three years. This has allowed us to, and I would, I would also give credit to this board that you hang on and choose to vote for approval for programs for what's best for kids as long as possible instead of can't. And I think you've done that for a long time. You've like, this is really good. It's hard, but we're going to find a way, find a way. Pretty soon, you just can't find a way. And that's when you see programs come offline. And you've done what's best for the kids in terms of keeping programs as long as you possibly can, because it's good for them. But there comes a point in the district where you just can't keep doing that carefully. And your interlocal is running low. And that interlocal was the ability to keep programs and opportunities for students, the poor experience, which we come to love and count. You are not able to do that at the rate that you used to, because your interlocals are being depleted quickly.
And Zim, let's say you don't serve any group discussion. Kristy Hattman, if you want to jump in?
Um, I don't, yeah, no further questions, thank you.
Ready for items for action? You got a nice deep dive on how we gather on items for action.
Okay, so we're going to items for action and come back with a whole more information.
Yep, we'll pick you up at the end, we'll pick up our salary or our...
Can I ask, can I ask you to change the agenda one more time?
Sure.
I have, I have the next presenter that has another appointment at six. So can we, can we move to item for information number one? And then go up for items for action?
That's the...
Okay.
Yes. Let's move out.
Yeah, we are, we are sitting on the... So I'll queue up CMS. So we're going to switch gears. We are, we are, we've actively, and Carrie Mizell of HR is actively in pursuit of a consistent pay matrix, a compensation philosophy. We haven't had one, to no discredit, too different, that there's not a lot of school districts that engage this activity. But where we were three or four years ago, and really just working our way, our own way through compensation and, and the philosophy around that, for lack of, we knew, Carrie and I and our teams knew that we needed a third person, a third organization to come in and give us a 360 view of what we do, how we do it, and how can we be better. And so it's really difficult to talk about compensation, as we all know. And the administrative team that's responsible for ours and others, as we go through negotiations and/or those that are not unions, we wanted a much clearer approach for us to understand and to be able to, to tell it out. And so that's why we brought CMS in. Jim Ferrants is, works with Caleb, Mel, Lewis, Caleb Lewis. So the two of them have been working with us almost 10 months. Yeah, about 10 months, a year. And so we're, we're working through this. We met again today as a, as a team. And so I've asked, I don't want this to get lost in the shuffle. And I don't want you to come back and we have to vote on a matrix and go, I didn't know about. I want to keep this forward in our, in our vision and care about it. So it's not a surprise when we are working through it and it comes to the table for a vote. So that's why Jim's here tonight, so thank you for taking it.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Watson. Thank you all for shifting the schedule once I've come in my time. I really appreciate that. So just a real quick recap. Like Rex said, we started about a year ago with a salary survey in May of 2024, surveyed some of the comparable double A school districts and employers in the area, Helena. So really got a good sense of where the district stands in the regard of the market. Then from August to December, most of your involvement developing the compensation philosophy for the district. And that was very helpful as far as guiding our efforts and indicating what we should do with the data, you know, once we got the market data, where we go with it. And then, like Superintendent said, we've been working on, in the meantime, what do we do with all this information? HR Director Mizell's been doing a lot of work as far as looking at individual jobs and figuring out where they should slide into the matrix. So our goal is to have a market base or a comparable and fiscally responsible pay plan for all of the employees in the public schools. So I'm just looking at the memo that was in your packets, and the recommendations for pay plan priorities we have. I just want to briefly walk you through that so we can see what things are coming down the road, answer any questions about that. So this would be, in addition to or independent of any type of wage increase for staff that you approve as far as adjusting the matrix. But one of the things we recommend is to update the independent salary matrix to support logical progression. When we were doing the study, we did notice... Uh, when we were doing the study, we did notice that the independent matrix uh, got a little bit out of whack. And that's, that's pretty normal. Over time, when you set up a matrix, if you do, you know, cost of living adjustments or wage adjustments, or there's rounding errors. Sometimes the percentage increases from grade to grade or step to step, you know, the whack. So. We recommend that now that we're implementing this new market data, uh, this is a good time to kind of clean that up. Uh, so for example, we saw some of the steps, you know, with which uh, that progressed to get a step uh, each additional year. Um, some of those ranged from one point nine to two point seven percent. They were kind of um. Maybe not in line with the uh, compensation philosophy that you all established. And then we saw some of the increases grade to grade, somewhere as small as seven percent, somewhere as great as thirteen percent. You know, going from one grade to the other. So what we tried to do is reform, reform that entire matrix so that. The steps move up a little more logically. There are about two and a half percent at the, the lower steps that may, they kind of taper down two percent. One point seven five percent. So it's a little more logical as we go. And then the distance between grades as jobs move up is more logical. So what that'll do is if. As people move through the steps, if they stay in their current role or if they get promoted or realize promotion is going up grades. Those percentage increases will be more logical and consistent. So hopefully that'll lead to a little more consistency and internal equity with the matrix. The second thing we're gonna, we're recommending is that we do establish salary ranges for our administrators. Uh, our current system, we don't really have a formal wage uh, range with like an entry, a midpoint, a maximum. So in order to uh, you know, ensure that we're competitive, we recommend those wage ranges be market based. And that we get something in place for our administrators. And again, that'll help us be competitive and also lead to consistency. Across administrators and also help us uh, better manage the pay relationships between administrative staff and other staff, a bargaining unit, and teacher staff. Um, we are recommending to continue progression through the wage ranges for independent staff. So like I said, independent staff. Uh, we'll start out as certain rates. Uh, we have what we call steps. So each step they'll move up typically each year, they move up a step. Um, and, and that's how the uh, individuals in those. Positions can basically move from the entry rate to the midpoint or a market rate and beyond. Um, so it's very nice to have that structure and uh, predictable progression. Makes it easy for you to budget, makes it easy for staff to know, you know, where their pay's going to go in the future. Uh, that is something that we've done, you know, historically. So we recommend we keep that practice and continue to budget for. Moving independent pay through those ranges um, as they gain experience over time. Um, and then our fourth recommendation would be to. Implement a similar progression through the uh, salary ranges for administration. So again, we don't want to just hire administrators and have their pay sit. Uh, we want to provide predictable progression. We may typically hire people at a. At or near an entry rate of the job and then they progress uh, to, to a rate that would reflect the market and then a little bit beyond that. Um, so we do want to have a predictable mechanism for advancing that pay. Uh, so that's another recommendation. Uh, we strongly feel that the school district should implement. Uh, and then our fifth recommendation is to address the ranking and placement of positions. So when we did our market study, we found that, you know, we had some positions where the pay. Either the incumbent pay and the wage range were either above or below the market. Um, so we recommend doing some adjustments there. We don't want to pay too far above the market because we want to be fiscally responsible. Uh, but we don't want to pay below the market because then we're gonna have trouble attracting and retaining staff and. Probably end up spending the money, if not the money and more, uh, through turnover and costs there. So it's better to invest in folks and keep. Your good experienced, uh, knowledgeable folks around than it is to have turnover. So those wage um. Placements and ranking will be based on the market as well as job content. Uh, so your HR director is looking at both of those. They're, she's looking at the market. To make sure we're placing jobs in a range that's market competitive wherever possible. We're also looking at the content of the job, you know, the duties they perform, the complexity of the work, the scope, uh, the qualifications required. Um, so that we're making sure we're placing positions appropriately given what we're asked them to do. So and the main reason for doing that, for having that job content component is, you know, if there is, say, a gender inequity in the market. We don't want to perpetuate that gender inequity in the school district. So we'll take our own look at the content of the job. And what they're doing, what the qualifications are. Uh, so it's, it's a, it's both a science and an art to really make sure that we get those classifications right. And. Uh, like I said, Carrie's been working really hard on that and we're kind of in uh, the final stages of getting jobs classified and ranked. Then we'll look at uh, where should people be placed in, in those wage ranges. Uh, based on their experience and recommending some wage adjustments there. So those are kind of the main um. Infrastructure uh, recommendations we made for the wage matrix. And then of course. Um, Superintendent already referenced, we also need to keep up with inflation. Uh, you know, there needs to be a periodic enterprise wide wage adjustments. We usually recommend employers keep their eye on the consumer price index since that's going up. You know, we have to keep our wages moving up there just to keep our employees whole. You know, if inflation goes up four percent, we don't make an adjustment or we make a two percent adjustment in light of a four percent inflation. Folks are actually losing money. So, you know, we want to keep up with these progression or step increases to move people from entry. Through the wage matrix, but then we also have to keep our wage matrices up by providing those matrix wide inflationary adjustments. Um, it's not in our memo, but we do recommend, you know, periodically doing uh, market evaluations like we did uh, last year. We don't need to do those every year. If you're keeping up to pace with inflation. Um, and making those matrix adjustments, we're not going to fall too far behind the market. But we should look at the market every two years, every four years. Uh, to make sure, you know, supply and demand or other factors that impact the market. Uh, you know, to make sure that our, our system is responsive to that. And the new classification system we're, we're recommending and implementing. Does position the district to be responsive to big swings or changes in the market. So if you see a big change. In the market for a certain occupation and that's just not a one-off spike. Or that's an actual trend that we may want to look at, you know, potentially reclassifying that job to be more market dependent. So that's a lot. Um, you know, when we look at fiscal impact, we really recommend. You know, we are traditionally doing these step increases for independent staff. Um, so really the, the cost of, of what we're implementing. Uh, won't be significant compared, compared to those step increases. I mean, getting administration or the administrators on board with a consistent system. Uh, right sizing the independent wage matrix. Um, you know, those costs should be considered, but we're gonna, you know, be continuing the steps. Uh, increases regardless. Um, so we gotta make sure when we're looking at the cost. You know, we're not rolling all that into the overall cost of the plan, just looking at the cost of the changes as the ultimate. So that is my informational piece. Uh, is there anything else I, we want to touch on or any questions? Phil, Carrie, you have. Do you have anything you want to add? If you may, if there's a question.
Happy to answer questions. I think Tim did a great job of summarizing it. Again, I'm very. Thankful to CMS to coming in and, and again, putting that, that science to the art. So when I. Started with Helena Public Schools, we don't have, we didn't have a mechanism. We're still finalizing the mechanism of when we establish a new position. Where is that placed on the salary scale? And so now we have a tool of where we can place things on the salary scale. Again. We talked about other compensation philosophy for budgeting. We want to have predictable increases that are logical. So again, I really appreciate the work. That CMS has done to get us in a place where we can right size some things and have a good process going forward pending approval. So um, I think it's been great work. I, I like that we have something that's. Defensible, that we can explain to people, you know, when you start talking about people's. Position, they equate their position with a value and that can get challenging, talking about their personal value versus. The value of that job and how it's in the market. Uh, but those are conversations we welcome to have and this is a great first step. Uh, so again, it can be explained, maybe not always liked, but explained.
Interesting. Do you also want to suggest not. Those not in a membership or a new development? This is a package for all compensation philosophy for the entire district, right?
Yes, yeah, so we, we focus on two, but there's really, does affect. Uh, how we think about compensation for our districts. Absolutely, yeah. The compensation philosophy is overarching. I mean, that covers everybody and certainly one of the elements. That our compensation philosophy is to try to have. Some consistency or at least logic across employee groups. And we're never gonna, you know, just have a one size uh, fits all pay plan. There's going to be differences for teachers and administrators and everything, but. As far as our underlying kind of philosophical approach, you know, we're trying to be consistent, trying to provide, you know, similar opportunities for wage growth, similar concern for retention. Similar concern for market competitiveness.
And so we still, through our union groups, we still negotiate in good faith, right? But the compensation then guides our thinking uh, from a district perspective. And so it doesn't alleviate the ability or we never uh, to say we're not gonna negotiate because we have a comp philosophy. But there are also individuals or payroll groups that does not have, I mean, it does not negotiate. So there's two helps the entire district come. Really put it all together. Uh, Board Chair, we also have the comment from Trustee Heather.
Go ahead, Trustee Heather.
Chair.
Trustee Hutton, you can go ahead.
Sorry, I was uh, speaking, but I was muted. So I'll try that again. Um, yeah, I just want to um, reiterate how important this work is. Um, those of you uh, trustees that have been on the board for quite a while know that. The downside of not having this sort of work led to some really significant issues and it's um. I think it's really evident in our improved culture that we're taking care of this work. And um, we still have a little bit uh, more work to do, but we did prioritize where we needed to, to, to get things back on track. So both. Our HR department and CMA, I'm very thankful for that work. Um, I did have a question. Um, it was my impression and perhaps I am incorrect, but that the uh, paraprofessionals, I. Was under the impression that they might be a little bit low.
The entry level, when we, when we compare to other double A districts, the entry level of pay for paraprofessionals, we're going off the memory, so. Forgive me, was a little bit below the market, but our overall compensation package was comparable with other double A districts. Especially when you look at the longevity and the years of service that most of our paraprofessionals have, they are at or above market. So. Our, our entry level point is slightly a little bit or baseline and our high point are. Very much competitive with the double A district.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I didn't guess that you had um, omitted looking at, at that group, but um. I had heard that they were low, so I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that that group had also been addressed.
Yes, we are continuing to be a bargaining with the parent educator.
Thank you.
We, yeah, we did click market data on that version. We have a good basis and. Um, yeah, I think that's a really important point. Uh, you know, is that this. This is not, you know, the compensation philosophy in the structure will not limit. Uh, you know, the ability to bargain, uh, employees' ability to bargain. In fact, the intent is. For the philosophy to kind of support that. And the union folks were very instrumental, very helpful in the compensation development, uh, philosophy development sessions and everything there. So. Uh, my, my hope is this will, you know, flow together very nicely, kind of support consistency without, you know, limiting anybody's ability to bargain or negotiate.
Yeah, I just really want to thank you because I know it's not ad hoc, but certainly at times it's felt ad hoc. In how we approach things, it's based upon which contract is up for negotiation and kind of. Who's the farthest behind and who's the loudest, you know, and who's treated the most and, and especially when trustees come and go. To have a philosophy we can reference as kind of institutional knowledge. And the fact that we are talking about groups. When they're not just in the negotiating period, that we're cognizant of where they fall. Before, after we get into that. So we need to kind of keep that in mind and we. By using market, you actually have. Numberers to be able to look at rather than we have the feeling they're behind, you can specifically. Address that. So uh, I think the administration, I, I really think um. Kind of like, we talked a lot, right, when we came on about. We want to have some consistency so we can tackle these longer range issues. Before they keep erupting into crises. So um. I really appreciate you coming on board. I appreciate you reaching out. I mean, it's just, it was very helpful for me to sit on that. Philosophy committee and to hear from groups like Joke, to hear from like sectors. To get their input as well. So it was, it was very beneficial.
I would just summarize what, what we've heard. I, I. We don't have enough. Money to operate the way we have officially done. So having a rationality with one every decision that we make. And one of the most important things we can make is start by scanning, scanning of benchmark to be, we. If we go below it, at least we know that we have. And at least we can explain why. Uh, so it's very useful. So much of your.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. All right, thanks very much. Thanks for.
Right. Items for action. First item for action is equivalent of the HPSHA, so we're looking at bargaining, isn't it? Don't ask you.
Sounds like y'all have covered their authority, but um. It was very thoughtful getting into the sun on fighting that the teaching bargaining committee did ratify it. So the board unit is. Is a recommendation to approve, uh, what was negotiated of Superintendent Swalz already said, the invasion of sixth day. Census building process with Diane Brown. Very grateful for that adjustment. This is the first year in my tenure, we're actually having a ton of new studio contact. I think that's based on the work that we've done to really work through and get to the issues. Um, a lot of what we see for language changes was cleanup and consistency and just trying to have clarity on family. Um, one of the significant issues that was important to teachers was the one that we've heard about is, is workforce issues. So we added some language about. How we will collectively address workforce shortages and some options that we can engage in should that occur. So that should continue to foster that positive culture we worked so hard for and want to. Continue to help. Uh, we had clarification about. Changes that are approved for long-term leave of absences for six months or a year, um, that they would not be eligible for professional growth plans. That was just a clarification, again, trying to have clarity. In our contract language and consistency going forward. Um, clarified language about teachers on a sabbatical, um, of how their benefits would apply and. Um, really appreciated the suggestion from AGA that new teachers, that teachers returning from sabbatical will come. And making sure presentations should be all the board of trustees about um, their experience. Something that will be really telling. We added language about short-term leave of absences for teachers when they need to take leave without pay for one or two days because they. Maybe have exhausted all of their available leave and this is outside of a medical condition, long-term ongoing. We clarified language about um, qualifications. Should there be a reduction in force? Um, that was agreeable to all parties so that again, we can have consistency in how we look forward. In the unfortunate event that we have to do a reduction, but it's based on qualifications and not to. Them teaching that within the ten years, um, within on the public stage. We have a lot of a less conversation about maybe unintended consequences for that, but we felt that this was. Um, the best moving forward. And then we've continued to work to get better on our evaluation. Um, governance model and so talked about, again, the timelines and how we can continue to improve the tool, how we can use the tool to. Reach the intent of just fostering communication and giving powerful feedback. Uh, so one of the things that we agreed upon and like you said, for tenure teachers that are on the evaluation cycle, they get evaluated every three years. If their first evaluation of all is positive, there's no need to do a second evaluation unless. The principal or administrator feels a bit frustrated. So that's some other things that we're working on. And of course, we'll be taking to assess and make sure that it's hitting the heart and hitting what we're, our intention. But those were some of the highlights of the language changes. And then we've already touched on a lot of the compensation piece. Um, we did agree to, and it did cost thirty seven dollars and fifty cents per month to contribute for health insurance. So that. Brings the employer contribution up to one thousand sixty nine dollars and forty cents. As Superintendent Wolf already said, we don't have those final figures yet. Uh, Rich Franco was. Was working yesterday trying to get those, those numbers done. So we'll have those three in a couple of weeks, but we believe that that will help offset some of the. What might be an anticipated increase based on the other things that we have down with unbundling dental and vision, providing. More robust providers for dental and vision, looking at our three forty B and our pharmacy plan. And then restructuring in our, our plan a little bit pending approval, of course. So we're, we're hoping people's benefit dollars will go further to get them more. We adjusted the extra duty rate from thirty fifty six to thirty three dollars. An hour effective July first. This is for those teachers that do summer work that provide coverage um, during lunch break or for miss periods. Uh, miss prep periods. So those are some of the feedback covers. Uh, we already talked about the Stars Act that we adjusted the salary matrix for twenty five, twenty seven. So the average teacher's salary is sixty six percent to be compliant. And next year for twenty six, twenty seven, we will get to that seventy seven, seventy percent to. And next year for 2627, we will get to that 70, 70% to be compliant. Again, we've had five years. Again, we had a very robust conversation about how that implementation could work. And this is through the consensus process, this is where it was added. And then finally, a 2% increase to the salary matrix for 2526, a two and a half percent increase for 2627, and the total estimated compensation package for that is 2.6 million. Again, we hope that you will approve this. As it does support our compensation philosophy, it gives a meaningful increase to continue to keep teachers at a competitive wage and is in alignment with what the intention of the STARS Act would for. That is. Questions, comments, or questions?
Presenting a, a report for HPS, HPS. Again, all right. Our chairman P, I move that we approve the HPS HGA teacher collective bargaining agreement. Ask president.
Awesome, thanks. All right, can we finish in a second? So we'll open it up to this meeting. Public comment? You ready for the comment on the motion? Do you have any comment online? Do you need to report something right this time?
I am just so grateful we have a tenure contract. I cannot even trust you, I'm sure everyone else. It's a great thing to do.
That's my.
I'm, I'm thankful that we're, we're here talking about staff pay and teacher pay, and we don't consider anybody out to give an administrative stab or a piece of praise. So thanks to everyone for their hard work. I know it's, it's an emotional process, even with a little extra juice in the system, it's still an emotional process to come to at the agreement. So thank you to everyone for giving the time. And thank you to our teacher, we're not representing them too, who fight for them. Great, anything else? I'll listen in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any votes, any? All right, the motion passes eight to zero. Moving on, smoothie approval of the HPS electrician collective bargaining agreement.
Focus of the busy time for HR. But very happy to have in front of you the recommendation for our electrician. We've worked very closely with IBW. And so you'll see in front of you some things that we're looking to do. They were one of our groups that settled first last year, and so they did not get some of the things that we negotiated with their contract. So again, that goes back to the compensation philosophy bringing clarity. So again, looking at giving them the $32.50 increases for health insurance to increase the employee premium to 1,069.40. A 2% increase to their base wage for the 2526 fiscal year. You'll also see in here an increase to the longevity schedule. These, this employee group does not get step increases as part of their salary matrix. So in order for them, so the only increases they get are if they stay with us for a long time. So then they would get that 60 cents after five years or and or through negotiated salary increases such as we did with 2%. So we agreed to increase the longevity schedule outlined there. So five to 10 years would be an additional 60 cents per hour, moving to 15, 85 cents, 15 to $20, 10 per hour. And those employed with us for over 20 years, we can have a additional $1.60 per hour. And again, that's in lieu of a step increase that you would see on a salary matrix. We increased the closing, closing allowance from 300 to 500 with an estimated cost of the salary allowance to be about 1,900 for this employee group. Again, we're hoping that you will approve this. We have a very positive negotiation history with IBW. And again, this brings clarity to the other trade councils that we work with that you will hopefully be in front of you soon. Question?
I, I have a question. I'm just curious, is the recommendation that we just heard about for the compensation, you know, strategy, would it put this group on a matrix, on a matrix steps as opposed to this longevity schedule?
You know, that's something we can definitely talk about and consider in the future. The, the transcripts work a little bit differently. And so historically, they haven't had salaries, a traditional salary schedule. They, they do these longevity increases. I really appreciate that IBW works closely with us and they, they factor in what their salary would be comparable with other double A districts or city and county. They're not, they recognize that we can't compete with private sector. And so they're very understanding in where our restrictions are for our right lap to be able to compensate based on what you could get out of the private sector. So we continue to be competitive and the longevity schedule will help continue with the help of recruitment and retention so that we don't fall too much below market. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the HPS eligibility complaint?
There is a move we approved at HPS project, electrician flex of bargaining agreement. Is there a second? All right, good. Motion second, is there any public sound? So any for the motion? Oh, we have a second by asking aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Yes, the second from Steve Walsh.
Who's second in that?
Yes.
The money dropped by a school student who studies curriculum, world cultures, American studies, and I'm interested in us.
And to the trustees, superintendent else, it's an honor to stand before you today at the event, updates, curriculum updates to our world studies. American studies one, now American studies two, updates with our social studies team. The hope is to have this curriculum adopted at the board level in accordance with 2015, policy 2015. We've done some significant overhaul of the work of what was originally world studies, US history and government at the high school level. So you'll notice I presented, we presented, excuse me, at Teaching and Learning, the social studies brochure, I think it's page 20, right? All the way through page 90 is something. You'll notice too, at the bottom of the, I guess it's the first side. Falling components are proposed for cross-town updates and adoption, should say adoption as well, compelling questions, supporting questions, summative assessments, rubrics, semester pacing, unit foundational documents and topics. So about six years ago, social studies teams, 612 convened to really look at the C3 standards, which are national standards, college career and civic life. The high school continued that work, and what they did is they overhauled their units, really diving into inquiry, asking students to think deeply and develop skills versus robo content memorization. So what you're seeing is that six-year output here. We have some formatting to do, of course, with our world studies. But the orange top formats are to world studies, the inquiry units there. Through. I don't have the page numbers in front of me, so smoothie me. I think it's about 10 pages in is American studies one, and then American studies two. So as I said, the focus has really turned into inquiry, giving students the tools to be critical thinkers, to be analysts, to really understand what information they're reading, and to be ready, again, for college career and civic life. So before you are the proposed changes to the units, and this would be at no cost. So we're adopting a way of doing that. Oh, Jen, if you ever do earlier, yes. I shouldn't say no cost, right? There'll be a department, there'll be department costs. But what they've done with these pilots is work on internal structures. So they printed internally, and the students are actually developing portfolios at the American studies one level, which follows them into American studies two. So they're building on knowledge. And this is also a way of integrating civics, history, economics, and geography over the course of two years from American studies one to American studies two. And then launching all of those skills early in ninth grade with world studies. So, yeah, a lot of the resources they're using are open educational resources. So they're accessible online, we cite them appropriately. We ask, you know, copyright, we've all, all those Christopher's stuff. There would be no adoption resources, just a way of doing it. This is how we do business, ninth, 11th, and 12th grade social studies, both of our schools, or home school schools.
Trustee. Trustee Heather, I'm watching. Jen, Ben.
All right, I just have a comment. It must have been two or three years ago, I was passing through the central office and the social studies curriculum team was working, and I sat in for about an hour. And it was extremely impressive how open-minded and collaborative they were. And considering that this took six years and you came out with a really workable and, and what it would appear to be a much more meaningful curriculum and path for all of our social studies students, I, I just wanted to congratulate all of you and thank you for your work.
Jen. I just had a question. So it's a two-year scope inquiry. So does that still align with like the American history one year and the garbage another year?
It's integrated, yes. Okay, so how does that, that we are, I'm kind of interested, how does that work to integrate those two? So they do it, each unit has a different focus. So they'll focus maybe more on civic aspects or on the historical aspect of different questions. So let me point you to. Yeah, I don't have the page numbers. I'm, I'm looking at American studies two. I, I didn't tell you, 1755, three, taken under the Revolutionary War and Constitution was the American Revolution revolutionaries. So here, what we're going to look at is a few different compelling questions. So they're looking at primary sources, they're looking at the history, they're looking at civic life, they're looking at different parts of geography. And just looking at even the English book, right? So this is one of the major sources. So they take that initial exposure in American studies one and revisit that. So when we said they start with the sources, they start with a lot of these sources in American studies one, and continue to build on them with American studies two. They do a lot of argumentative writing, take a stance, claim-based, develop. It's, it's really impressive. I think the other thing you heard with the Helena High School's presentation, when we did their work session, you heard Megan Schulte talk about their increasing writing scores. Really do think that it changed with some careful attention to how we're doing disciplinary orders. I think they, excuse me, trustee, that, right? Yeah, we, we talked about this a lot in Teaching and Learning, too. It'll just teach reading and reading, not to be careful or something, possibly. So starting a foundational context and content in middle school and building that out to the high school, and then focusing, changing that to skills-based and applications, really important, maybe there's some breakout. So with the pilot, with the trial and error, with the building, they go try, they come back to the table, and it's just been a privilege to do that this year, and then we see how deep they've dug in. So there's lots to kill through, but I can see how intense and how much change. Trustee Heather, that pretty significant findings, changes, yeah.
There's gonna be hope. There was like, there was, first of all, I'm sad, one of the questions I am just sad about, thinking that kids are going to associate with this. And that, that they'll be able to find a position, they'll be able to argue, especially this, this will work, for, for no lines. Like in the Native American dishes, is there any hope that maybe we could take some of this philosophy and take it down as well, to the lower grades and Asian population?
Yeah, and we're working on that. It's become kind of a bad word. Is that, we've actually spent quite a bit of time this year with the English program. Yeah, so they've looked at an inversion of our adopted resource, TCI. Sixth grade has really dug in, they've remapped some of their units. This year, eighth grade actually went, moved towards more of the Native approach, a lot of theory-based themes and integration through, yes, for.
Right.
Trustee, and I, I think this is, I, this has been something that's, since I did for Teaching and Learning, maybe like the first, probably beginning when I was entering the more way to do it from the sixth grade. And I think it's just, it's awesome, and it's so much work. I had a question on, and this is really kind of like a super question. As or if sources become available that aren't already envisioned, how, because the, whether this is a scale-wise?
Absolutely, through the PLC process. So departments are collaborating deeply. We're also making space for them to meet, to do PIR. So the hope would be that they're doing some work together. One of the most significant agreements we wanted to make and make sure we're documented is that there are no big changes to any of this until we can come together as a team, and then it's consensus-based. So they might, they might find resources along the way that they'd like to bring forward, but you'll notice, I should, the American studies one and two, there's a column there that says P for resources, those are the ones that we use, we're going to use foundational work. So everyone should be using those, and then aside from that, to extend learning, provide another opportunity. You can pull on some of those. Questions?
I'll just echo the appreciation that's already been expressed and being so impressed with what's emerged here. Yeah, it was, it was really fun to just scan through all of this great information here about, about the different questions and then the resources. And I loved it, of course, that the skills, being able to write, is woven into both of them, so.
There were three teachers that did present, yeah, at the Teaching and Learning community. And I just, I wanted to say that group is pretty fantastic. Their commitment to doing and researching and building is unmatched. So they, they represent the entirety of the social studies group. So the work that they did went through numerous feedback groups, communication, it's brought back to the department, brought back to feedback, put it in practice. So it was pretty tight and intensive, and they dug in and we started with it. So kudos to them. They should be presenting this, but I get to have the privilege to say, look at all this great work. So, thank you. Good, good inspiration. No other, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure, I would just like to move, and I have to keep our sense of, I mean, approving the, back in next week, we have to go. The Helena Public School, high school, social studies, world cultures, American studies one, and American studies two update that's presented. This is not free, it's a second. All second. Right. Our, we got a motion, a, a, a second. I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm here, folks, I'm second. We got a second, it's pressing. Oh, can second, thank you. Do you have any public comment on the issue? Good work.
I guess I'll just add excellent work to do in your team, and just skimming through all the resources and the topics. There's a hope, right? Because there's a lot of stuff that, there's a movement to erase, so keeping history alive for our students was much.
Trustee Heather, I say aye. Aye. I was a close may. Motion passes eight, zero. And thirty-four or super anything comments?
That's for me, I would get it. Also, I think we will have you on time.
I wanted to thank Rod Water on the three four, posting us, what a good work that you do. Let me just take a reader. All right.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.